So if you haven't joined already, please join up. And with that, I'd like to introduce our first speaker, Paul Taylor. Paul Taylor is the Director, Occupational Hygiene Policy at Safe Work Australia. Paul completed his PhD in Chemical Technology at the University of South Australia in 2001. He worked as a chemist in industrial gases and agriculture and veterinary chemicals sectors, before moving to Canberra to join the Australian Pesticides and Veterinary Medicines Authority. Paul joined Safe Work Australia's research team in 2008 and then worked on policy underpinning the Model Work Health and Safety Regulations for asbestos. The Occupational Hygiene Policy Team leads is responsible for Model Work Health and Safety Regulations, hazardous chemicals, major hazard facilities, asbestos, noise, inorganic lead, health monitoring and workplace exposures. Paul's presentation is "What Does R U G H Ready Mean For You?" Thank you, Paul.
It's lovely to be here in Hobart today. Thank you all very much for turning on the weather for me. I understand it's been a really lovely summer into autumn. The weather down here is actually better than in Canberra at the moment, so I'm really pleased to be here. Thanks very much to Pam and the WorkSafe Tasmania for inviting me down to talk to you today about the GHS. What I'm here to talk to you today about is a little bit about the background of the GHS, why we have it, what it is, and then hopefully, if I manage my time appropriately, I'll be able to talk to you in a bit of detail about what it means for businesses at various points in the supply chain. So this is a brief overview. I think I've just covered most of that. But what is the GHS? Well, the GHS is a purple book, when it comes down to it. It will always be a purple book. It is known as the purple book. The equivalent transport documentation internationally is known as the orange book. They like to keep things simple in the United Nations and don't have particularly long titles. Well, when you make a title that long, the globally harmonised system of classification and labelling of chemicals, you need a shorter way to refer to it. So what is it and why is it important for all businesses? It's a set of criteria for objectively assessing and communicating the hazards of chemicals. It covers single substances, so pure substances like ethanol and benzene and those kind of things. It covers solutions, so acids, which are solutions of chemicals in water, and mixtures. So the majority of stuff you use in your workplace is probably a mixture. And how the hazards of those components of the mixture interplay and contribute to the overall hazard that's posed to you and your workers in the workplace is what the GHS aims to communicate. So there are a set of criteria outlined in the purple book for a range of hazard groupings. So they relate to physical and chemical hazards. So some of the things you'll be familiar with is flammability, so the ability of something to burn, corrosivity, whether something can burn through your skin or be corrosive to metals, so cause rusting and corrosion. And also it covers health hazards. And the health hazards it covers span the full gamut of things from minor skin and eye irritation to carcinogenicity, the ability to cause cancer, the ability to cause birth defects, and some acutely toxic things along the lines of acute poisoning on a single exposure, as well as things like damage to your kidneys, liver and other organ systems of the body. It also covers environmental hazards. Environmental hazards aren't captured in the Australian implementation of the GHS because environmental hazards are regulated under environmental law, not under workplace health and safety. However, you will see chemicals particularly coming in from Europe that will have the environmental hazard communication elements associated with them. So the GHS communicates to people the hazards of the chemicals and it communicates the intrinsic hazards of the chemicals. So those properties that are fundamental to the make-up of the chemical, it doesn't talk about risk. So it's not about the likelihood of something and you being exposed to the chemical and an outcome resulting from that. It's about what is an intrinsic property of the chemical itself. Risk, because it varies so greatly depending on how you're using the chemical, what you're using it with, and what controls you have in place to control that exposure, risk is not included in this system. It's up to the end user, the person using the chemical, to assess the risk based on their use of the chemical. So that's what the GHS is. When's it coming? Well, it's pretty much already here. Originally, it was intended that Australia would adopt, along with all the APEC economies, the GHS by 2006. We're now a decade down the road and we haven't finished the transition to the GHS yet in Australia, but we're not alone there. We are pretty much on track with most of the major economies worldwide. Europe has just finished their transition. The US is still in transition. Canada is very much the same. So everybody has had this delayed take-up compared to what was originally intended because the GHS developed quite quickly over the period of the early 2000s and got much more refined and better put together. So people, you know, delayed till it became a much more mature system. So in Australia, the National Model Work Health and Safety Regulations, which have been adopted down here in Tasmania, they implement the GHS. So Chapter Seven of the Regulations for Hazardous Chemicals, they refer to the GHS in the definition of hazardous chemicals and they require classification and labelling and hazard communication to be done, pretty much in accordance with the purple book. The transition commenced to the GHS on the implementation of the Model Work Health and Safety Regulations back in 2012. The transition finishes in eight months. So that means from the start of next year, the GHS will be the classification, labelling and hazard communication system for workplace hazardous chemicals in Australia. I'll talk later on about what that means. But I guess the question that has been asked in the past is, okay, so we're getting this new system. What's there now? Well, there is a system in place. It's been in place for about 20 years. And most people aren't aware outside of the existence of the Australian Dangerous Goods Code, which most people kind of have an idea about, covers transport, but it also covers your placard in workplaces, like the placards are taken from that approach. But there's, for health hazards, this document called the Approved Criteria for Classifying Hazardous Substances. Now, that's based on a European system, so we were kind of harmonised with Europe for a long time. But now we're in a situation where instead of having physical and chemical hazards covered under dangerous goods in workplaces and health hazards covered under the approved criteria, the GHS brings that all together into one framework. So you have common label elements. It's all developed around the same concepts, the same approach, whereas dangerous goods is a slightly different approach, where it's looking really at immediate hazard in the transport sector largely. So this brings it into that kind of workplace storage and handling context. It is really important to note that the GHS isn't replacing the ADG code for transport of dangerous goods. So transport of dangerous goods is completely untouched by the GHS. So you still need to placard your vehicles if they're transporting dangerous goods. You still need to have transport labelling for stuff that's in transit, where it's appropriate, obviously. Why the GHS? It's a better system. It's comprehensive. It's consistent internationally. Everybody's going to use the same label elements. You'll see the same pictograms, the same images, the same signal words, the same phrases are used internationally. So it makes things easier for trade as well. If you're importing or exporting chemicals, you can use the same label elements across whichever economy you're dealing with. And if you're working internationally, if you're part of a large company, you know that you can send stuff to another country and the labels will look the same. So they'll have an understanding of the hazards of the chemical without having to deal with some strange-looking, unique label. So this is what we were dealing with previously internationally, in terms of workplace chemicals labelling. So you see the Canadian labelling there on the left, the old European system on the right, and the Dangerous Goods Code-based labelling that covered a large amount of stuff in Australia. Now, if you look at the top-left symbol there, it's an R with a torch in the middle. I don't know. I'm not quite sure exactly what that symbol is meant to indicate from just looking at it. It's not clear. What it does indicate is explosive hazard and highly reactive substances. But you can see that's different to the explosive symbol in the top-left corner of the European Union one. And then you have the Dangerous Goods class diamonds with very similar elements. Canada also has this strange T with an exclamation mark meshed together, which is for high, kind of severe health hazards. The European Union had the X, but for severe health hazards in Australia, we had nothing. There was no pictorial indication of a severe health hazard. And there still isn't under the Dangerous Goods Code, but under the GHS for workplaces, there will now be that. So as we bring this together, we'll see that the GHS kind of unifies those elements globally so it all looks the same. And here's an example of three different labels for the same chemical, acetone, something really commonly used. But you can see that it's really unclear, particularly in the middle one. There's a flame pictogram in that middle yellow one in the top-left corner. It's not evident that that's trying to communicate flammability because it doesn't look, it looks like it might be the company logo for all I know. And then you've got things like the hazard identification diamond, which is the US Fire Protection Association has a communication element they have over there. It appears really commonly on chemicals in laboratories. I remember using acetone squeeze bottles in labs with that on it and I had no idea what it meant because it's not used in Australia. Okay, so how does the GHS work? So there are basically four elements that communicate hazard in the GHS. There are the signal words, danger and warning. There are pictograms, which are the diamond-shaped symbols. I'll go into more detail about them in a second. We have hazard statements and precautionary statements that tell you about the hazard and the steps you need to take to either mitigate your exposure to hazard, to help you dispose of things safely and to store things safely. These elements then go onto the label for the chemical and they also go onto the safety data sheet. Most people will be familiar with the material safety data sheet that we've had in Australia for the last 20-plus years. Clearly, four-letter acronyms are really out of fashion, so everybody's going to safety data sheet now, just to be consistent because GHS is three letters. Let's keep it all the same. There are some points to note in terms of the implementation of the GHS in Australia. It doesn't apply to all chemicals. It doesn't apply to consumer chemicals. So if you're using Windex or a glass cleaner or something like that in your workplace in those normal 500ml-sized bottles, those chemicals will still be labelled exactly as they are now, under the consumer labelling requirements. If you have a 20-litre drum of glass cleaner in your workplace, that's a workplace chemical that should be labelled in accordance with the GHS. Therapeutic goods, so medicines, they have a very robust labelling scheme. They will continue to be labelled as they are, even when they're used in hospitals, et cetera. Cosmetics and toiletries, again, in their finished form, they will be labelled as they are currently. We have a partial exemption in place for explosives because of the existence of the explosive code, so the explosive hazards will continue to be labelled under that code. But any of the other hazards that are associated with the explosive should be labelled under the GHS. Agricultural and veterinary chemicals, which is an issue of significant controversy, we require some label elements on those under the Model WHS. And that's to pick up hazards that aren't included on the ag/vec chemical labelling because of the system of labelling they use, because it's risk-based. And this is about equity of information for end users so they understand that just because something is an ag/vec chemical, it poses the same hazards in a workplace as it would if it weren't an ag/vec chemical. So that's things like carcinogenicity and sensitisation that tend, on the basis of risk, not to be communicated on the label but are on the safety data sheet. So that just makes the two consistent as well. So to talk more about these signal words, so danger and warning are our two signal words. Danger is a higher level of hazard than warning and this simplifies the system compared to what we currently have in place because currently there are five different signal words you might see. Danger, warning, hazardous, dangerous poison and poison on a workplace chemical. Now, I can't tell which one's higher hazard than the others from that. Well, dangerous poison is going to be worse than poison, surely. But of danger, warning and hazardous, I'm not sure. Here's, I'm going to skip over this pretty quickly, but you can see on the left, there are nine GHS pictograms. There are the dangerous goods class labels in the middle that you may have seen, may not have. But effectively, you can see that the GHS picks up all the dangerous goods classes that are associated with chemical hazards. It doesn't pick up radiation, doesn't pick up the kind of miscellaneous dangerous goods category either. But there are two additional ones, the exclamation mark and the person there. And I'll talk more about that in a second. So here are the nine pictograms. So these communicate the hazards visually. Okay, this is really important when you've got workers' English second language, low levels of literacy. I recently had a colleague spend six or eight weeks out in an indigenous community, helping them with workplace health and safety. And while the community out there, they were very fluent in spoken language and, you know, some of them spoke up to five or six different indigenous dialects, as well as English. Their written literacy wasn't that high and having pictograms on labels makes a really big improvement to safety in that situation because you can see really simply visually what the hazard, what the headline hazard is. You'll notice the environmental hazard symbol down there in the bottom-left-hand corner of the dead fish and the dead tree. You will see that, as I said earlier, on some European chemicals as they come in and hopefully in time, we'll catch up here and the environmental legislation will implement that as well. The two new symbols are the exclamation mark, which is for things that are harmful or irritant, so skin irritation, eye irritation, also low-level toxicity. But the man with the exploding chest on the right, as he is almost universally referred to, is for severe health hazards, so the carcinogenicity, reproductive toxicity, things like damage to your organ system, so your liver, your kidneys, et cetera. So in terms of hazard statements, we have gradation of hazard statements. So it communicates the nature of the hazard and also the severity. It's very similar to the risk phrases that we used to have under the old system that you may have seen. So you'll have things going from highly flammable, sorry, extremely flammable, to a highly flammable to flammable in a grid date, in a stepwise fashion. It's the same with some of the other health hazards. You go from may cause cancer to suspected of causing cancer, depending on the strength and weight of the evidence to support the classification. So precautionary statements, again, these are the same as the safety phrases that we already have in place. And really, they're just about helping you understand what it is you need to do when you're handling or storing the chemical to ensure you're doing that safely. So it provides that basic level of information. If you need more detailed information about the type of PPE that's required, then the safety data sheet is the place for the detail for that information. And that's why the two, the label and the safety data sheet are developed together as a matched pair. So here are some GHS labels. So this is what you'll actually start, or may have already seen, but should start seeing. So here's the acetone label on the left. You can see it's an example label, but it's from a real product. I took it off the web. It's a much cleaner, clearer label than those ones we saw previously. You can see the pictograms, the signal words, very clear. And if you look to the aromasol on the right there, you'll see that we've got the three pictograms there, but the first two are actually dangerous goods class diamonds. You can see the class number down the bottom there, hopefully, and the dotted outline gives it away as well. Where there is an equivalent dangerous goods pictogram, sorry, class diamond, you can use that, you will see that on labels as a substitute for the GHS one. So that allows for situations where the container for the chemical is the transport container. So you've got a 1,000-litre IBC for people who deal in large volume stuff. So you would have to transport label that and GHS label it because it's used in the workplace. You would be able to kind of amalgamate the two systems and use the dangerous goods diamonds where appropriate on the label. There is one thing missing from that example label and that's the UN number for that chemical in order to be dangerous goods compliant. Safety data sheets, so safety data sheets really won't change a great deal compared to what you're used to now. It'll still be the 16 sections that we're all familiar with. The major change that you will see is in Section Two, where the hazard information and the classification is communicated. So where that's communicated, you will now see the pictograms, the new codes and hazard statements. The good thing, the position Australia's in is really good because the GHS format for safety data sheets was developed based on the existing Australian format. That's something we took back in 2000 to the UN and that was adopted as the model internationally. So this comes down to the, what does the GHS mean for you in your business? So what it means for you depends on your duties. And what your duties are under the WHS framework really depends on where you sit in the supply chain. If you're a manufacturer or importer, you have certain duties. If you're a supplier, so a supplier may also be a manufacturer or importer because obviously you've got to sell your product somewhere. Or you might just be a PCBU who is using chemicals in your workplace, you're not supplying to anyone else. Now, the important thing here is that none of these duties have materially changed under the GHS. The duties are still the same as they were, they just require compliance with the purple book and the codes of practice that are under the WHS. So some things won't change though. So labelling for consumer chemicals that you use in your workplace incidentally, like your glass cleaner, your washing-up detergent, those kind of things that you use in the same way you use at home, they will not change. Dangerous goods transport requirements, they won't change either. Storage placards on the outer perimeter of workplaces, on fences where chemicals are stored above certain quantities, on stores, on flammables cabinets, on those kind of things, they won't change either. They will still use the dangerous goods signage and class diamonds. The need for a register of your safety data sheets and the chemicals you keep on-site and for manifests once you get over certain quantities, that requirement still exists. They will need updating though. Your safety data sheets will need updating and it's probably a good chance to do a stock take anyway. So for manufacturers and importers, you really, they need to be re-classifiable, they need to be very well down the path of reclassifying and relabelling their chemicals. By now, we're eight months to go. You should start to see if you're in the supply chain, things coming through GHS labelled. I know I've started to see some locally in Canberra, which is really good to see. There are tools available if you are a manufacturer importer to help you reclassify. There are also companies who can assist you with reclassifying and producing labels and safety data sheets. That's what they do, that's their job. It can be very, very technical to do it. It's something that someone like me really, really enjoys, but everybody else finds really, really dull. But it's good that, you know, there are people who like to do it, I guess. So for people in the middle of the supply chain, so if you're supplying chemicals to other businesses, you're buying chemicals from a wholesaler into a retail premises, you're doing those things. When the transition finishes on the 1st of January, you need to be aware that from that point forward, with the regulations as they are written, you cannot supply a chemical that is classifiable as hazardous to a workplace unless it is GHS labelled. That's the way, that is absolutely the way the regulation has been written. It's been written that way for a reason. The transition has been five years and it, you know, was designed to allow for things to be sold through, for people to update their labels and safety data sheets at the top end of the supply chain and for that to flow through. How well that's happened, I'm probably not going to comment on at this point. But for some businesses, they're very well-prepared. For others, I think there's been a bit of time lag there in getting organised and it'll be interesting to see what happens there. So end users, which I would imagine is most people in this room, it's certainly most people who use chemicals. If you have stuff on-site now that you are using, continue to use them after the end of the transition. You don't have to relabel them. It's not effective or safe for people without expertise to relabel stuff. If they are correctly labelled now, so they meet the requirements, the existing label requirements, you can continue to use those chemicals. What I would encourage you though, is to use this as a really good opportunity to stock take, to go and see what it is you have lying around the place that you don't use or may you have had for a long time, has degraded and those kind of things, and use it as an opportunity to correctly dispose of those things. So you should also approach your suppliers now and see when you'll be getting GHS labelled stock if you're not already, and also let them know that you won't be able to accept non-GHS labelled stock come start of next year. Some large national businesses have actually written to all their suppliers in the last 12 months and said, you know, "Please be aware, 1 January, we're going to turn your stuff away if it's not GHS labelled and we want a GHS SDS as well, please." Very polite. But it has actually had an impact on some of the larger suppliers who were dragging their heels a little bit. But you should use it as an opportunity to update your SDS database, your manifests, your registers. And you also need to train your workers in understanding what these pictograms mean and how the signal words have changed. So danger is bigger than warning. There are obviously uses of chemicals in workplaces where chemicals are decanted from the container they're supplied in into other containers for use. Decanted chemicals, you don't have to do a full, you still have to label them, you don't have to do a full GHS label. Our labelling code of practice, which is available on the Safe Work Australia website, explains what the requirements are there and the same for research chemicals, samples for analysis. Small containers, obviously you can't cram everything on, so there's a hierarchy of how you reduce the label elements to the key ones depending on the size. Waste for disposal, again, is another issue, particularly when things get mixed in waste streams. And there've been a number of incidents over the last couple of years in waste facilities where stuff hasn't been correctly labelled, there've been explosions and fires. So if you are disposing of stuff, I would be, it would be remiss of me not to remind you to be prudent about labelling. And if you don't know the hazards of the chemicals, make that known, put that on the container, that the hazards are unknown. There are a number of resources available, obviously the purple book if you are classifying. We have a database of classifications if you need to classify something that you've made on-site for your own use and you want to know how to do it. We have a database of classifications that you can use as a basis. We have guidance on the classification. We have labelling codes of practice. We also have coming in the next two to three weeks, a whole suite of frequently asked questions about the GHS and about the hazardous chemicals framework. It's about 70, 80, 90 questions, it keeps on expanding, and they will address all the commonly, I guess, just, you know, asked things about how do I comply, what does it mean, what is this, you know, what is this GHS, how does it work? There are contact details, so our website, I encourage you to go there. We'll have lots more new stuff up there soon. That email address, workhealth@safeworkaustralia, that comes direct to my team. We answer probably about 2,000 queries a year via email. We answer probably about two thousand queries a year via email on that. So it is something we really actively do. And I would encourage you to get in touch with your local regulator as well if you have any questions. I'll leave it there. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, Paul. We now have Cameron is going to lead us with a small exercise pause. Any questions before that? Yes, Peter?
Yep, so outer placarding for premises, that remains as it is. So the Hazchem signs and the placarding stays exactly as, as it currently is. That doesn't change. The schedules in the regulations for placard and manifest quantities are expressed in GHS terminology and classification. But what goes on the outside is the standard traditional Hazchem placards with the Dangerous Goods diamonds. That's for consistency for emergency services. They only need to deal with one set across transport and when they come to your site in case of emergency. As Peter's the competent authority for Dangerous Goods in Tasmania, do you want to answer that one? Yeah, yeah, they, they still will carry for that workplace setting. They will still carry GHS pictograms. That's completely fine. Well, no, not if it's, if it's not, I guess, if it's not considered dangerous goods under the ADG code, then no, that stays as is. Well, I guess it's, look, they're for two different purposes, I guess. Dangerous goods is really, you know, is really targeted at transport. That's its primary, primary purpose. The fact that the Dangerous Goods signage elements are used for placarding of stores and premises is, as I said, it's for consistency for emergency response. So that, because what you're trying to do in emergency is respond to the immediate, the immediate threat, the immediate hazard. So for emergency services, having one set of hazard communication elements is really important. And the other thing is Dangerous Goods is a risk based system. So there are things that are not Dangerous Goods for transport that are classifiable as hazardous under the GHS. So, you know, particularly when you're talking about limited quantities for transport, it's not a really big, it's not a big issue, because you're not going to have a big problem with, you know, a two and a half litre bottle of ethanol. But in a workplace setting, you know, that does potentially pose some significant, you know, some potential risk in certain situations. So the hazard is communicated in that situation. But obviously the risk varies wildly depending on the volume and in what circumstances you're using it. So it's the, there are two different systems for different purposes. And it, I guess it's always been that way and always will be that way. So back in the olden days, well, back pre-GHS, when the approved criteria was being used, it still had the same effect. It was just that it, the, I guess, the physical hazard communication in terms of the diamonds was the same on, on the chemical. Now it's a change to that and it's a much more expanded and comprehensive, I guess, assessment of the hazards. It's much more consistent. But I'm happy to chat more with you about that afterwards.
Thank you again, Paul.